Next letter is from former councilwoman Marie Soliani. Dear Councilors, I'm writing an opposition to East Pearl Road as the site of the solar one generating facility. This pristine area is used for recreation and agriculture. It is still used and appreciated for the country feeling it represents. This narrow country road has already absorbed additions and usage. Cemetery, a middle school, and a year-round popular farm stand while still able to maintain its country look. This proposed energy generating facility will negatively impact the property values. The last thing Torrington needs is a further property value downturn. The facility will also disrupt the parcel's rural look, which now attracts people to it. I have no objection to solar energy. It is a much needed alternative to fossil fuels. This particular parcel is a strong choice for the facility in Torrington. A more adaptable parcel would be in Torrington's best interest. Please vote no on this proposed parcel. Thank you for your attention.
All right, the next one is from Michael Soliani. As a property owner on East Pearl Road, I am wholeheartedly against installing a solar farm on our road. I truly believe this will negatively impact property values in the area. Our community has not recovered from the 2008 economic downturn, and the last thing we need is anything that will impact property values in a negative way. A solar array in this area would be unsightly and ruin the rural beauty of the area. This project is also inside the watershed area. I have not seen any information on the impact to the environment. Please let the council know I am completely against this project, which does not fit into this area. Mike, Michael Soliani.
Okay. The next email is from Michael and Christine Rosa. Dear City Council members, we would like to express our concerns and repudiate the proposal of the construction of a solar photovoltaic electric generating facility at 263 East Pearl Road. Up until fall of 2010, this land has been farmed annually, and the open fields beyond the ball field are prime recreation space for local families to play ball, fly kites, walk their dogs, and a host of other recreational activities. Here, the portion of the field that has not been planted is harvested as hay just prior to the Fourth of July. Community joined together, spread blankets and lawn chairs throughout the field, and gather to watch the annual Torrington fireworks display here as well. We are attaching a video taken on Friday, June 12th, of the space, and a family using it for play. A project such as this would be better suited at a property that is not currently so vibrant and active in a community. For example, land that was previously used as waste disposal, where no other benefits can be found, would be an excellent space for such construction. We honorably request that our city council notify the Connecticut Siding Council of the losses that would be incurred by our community should the Veragee project be permitted. Thank you for your consideration, Michael and Christine Rosa.
All right, next one is from Mike Knab, and this is in regards to the Christopher Columbus Monument. My name is Mike Knab, and I am a resident and taxpayer in Torrington. I am asking the people of our city and our elected officials to consider removing the Christopher Columbus Monument on East Main Street and renaming Columbus Street Square. By his own admission, Columbus captured and enslaved indigenous people, and numerous credible historical accounts relate to that, relate that he tortured people and treated them very cruelly. This violent legacy does not accurately reflect the benevolent, hardworking spirit of our Italian-American community here in Torrington.
From Diane P. Holland of Long Meadow Drive to the City Council. The referendum for the new Torrington High School should be scheduled so as to provide maximum focus on the high school and the voters' choice about that issue. To that end, it should not be scheduled as part of the general election in November. A referendum, even an important one like this, might easily be forgotten by voters once they begin to fill out their ballot. Voters might be distracted by what promises to be a highly contested campaign season, at least at the national level. If that is the case, voters might not be able to give the high school question the attention it deserves. In especially acrimonious election years, some voters are likely to be more motivated to vote, but because of COVID-19, others may be discouraged or perhaps even fearful. For all of these reasons, the referendum deserves a separate standalone voting date, which the Board of Election has requested and has offered to pay for. A standalone referendum paid for by the Board of Education is the best possible scenario for the city and its residents, as well as the most important people in this referendum, the students.
Okay, next, we have a few people that just wanted to express their opposition to the solar farm project, and that was Kevin Rosa, Elizabeth Rosa, Jaclyn Caruso, also Nancy Hayes-Lubler. And the next written comment was from Jessica Tussman, and she says, Dear City Council Members, I hope this email finds you well. I would like to advocate that the solar project be relocated. East Pearl Road is used for farming and, most importantly, recreation for families. This location is heavily used by community members throughout all seasons. Please take this into consideration when you are deciding whether they should be replaced here, whether they should be placed here or not. This is also the perfect spot to watch the Torrington fireworks. Please reconsider the location of this initiative. This property is very important to the community. Please consider the community needs. This location is a strength and resource that meets the needs of children, youth, and families. Best, Jessica Tussman.
Okay, I get to read the short one from Sue Canziani. I'm adamantly opposed to the construction of solar panels on East Pearl Road. How can you approve such an eyesore in an area of beautiful land seen daily by parents and students?
All right, and the next one is from Heather Birdy and Jason Cardillo. Mayor Eleanor Carbone, members of Torrington City Council, Economic Development Director and City Planner. First and foremost, I would like to take time to thank each and every one of you for all you have been doing to keep Torrington safe and running during this pandemic. On a personal note, I was touching, it was touching to see how Torrington helped people in need with three boxes of produce on two different occasions at the Torrington Middle School. In many ways, it reinforced, in my mind, the need to preserve and encourage farming in our community. I live at 153 East Pearl Road, and we are located directly across the street from the proposed solar array. We have been actively attending the Veragee Zoom meetings, and would like to go on record as being for green energy, but feel that this location is not the appropriate spot for this project. A few points of concern, I do not feel we have received enough information on our property value. Will this project decrease our current home values and resale ability? This information is hard to obtain because the solar arrays generally are not placed so close to residential properties. Well water, we have shallow wells. Will the amount of rainwater we rely on for our wells, as well as the current quality, safety from pollutants, be worry for East Pearl Road? Temperature elevations, 11 acres of dark surface structures will elevate the air temperature. Will we, the community, constantly be getting blasts of hot air from the field? Will this have a negative impact on our wildlife? Safety, this project is literally feet from our community playing field. The middle school has a main access from East Pearl Road. We do not have sidewalks on East Pearl Road. The majority of pedestrians walk on the arch diocese side of the road. Does this energy field propose risks we are unaware to the community? We would like to go on record as being opposed to the site location of this project. And they also attached photos, which I had sent to the council members earlier today. It's a shame to lose all this productive farmland, as well as how this project will impact the Torrington community, residents, enjoyment of this property and its beauty. Thank you again for taking the time to hear our concerns.
From Jeremiah Rouette, from the Go and Seed Company, Product Development Lead Eastern Development Division. To whom this may concern, I'm writing to you an opposition of the solar project that is being proposed on East Pearl Road in Torrington, Connecticut. While I can think, while I think we can all agree that finding cleaner ways to provide energy is important, we must also make smart decisions on where the solar fields are located to be most efficient and to be beneficial for the community environmentally, economically, and socially. I can tell you personally that I have been a part of these projects in the agricultural community with customers of mine up and down the eastern seaboard and into the Midwest. I've yet to talk to one of my customers that have rented their property for solar installation that has been pleased with these projects. From their experience dealing with these solar projects, I have heard and seen the following. First off, they are a major eyesore. Even when tried to cover the view of the solar field with landscaping, the landscaping crews that are hired to maintain the property do minimal upkeep, which causes even more of an eyesore. I've seen that some of your results show that the surrounding land values increase with these solar fields, but I would have to say that your results are skewed. In the cases that I have seen, surrounding land values have diminished greatly, causing a deeper depressed state in the communities in which these solar fields are located, which is why you see more of a success rate with solar fields in much more rural areas, not in family communities. The land itself where these solar fields are on also diminish in value due to the fact that options to use the land for other needs are limited. The other factor that comes into play is that I have witnessed many of these solar companies go bankrupt within just a few years, and no matter what clause is in the contracts, it is the landowners and the surrounding community that is left to clean up the mess and pay off the debt. Therefore, I do not have much confidence in a company that has only been around a couple of years, given the track record of companies that have gone out of business in this industry and lack of experience. Lastly, this industry still has a long way to go in producing power efficiently and profitably. Many of these solar fields do not generate the power they claim due to many factors, including technology, but most importantly, the adverse weather conditions that we experience with damaged panels that we most certainly would experience, given the history of harsh weather on East Pearl Road. Thank you for your time. Take care. Best regards, Jeremiah Rouette.
Okay, so the next one, Gary Meyer, just wanted to go on record that he was opposed to the, to Veragee's proposal. And we do have one more comment that was submitted to us at 5:30. That one was from Susan Fritsch, and she says, I'm opposed to the solar panels being placed on East Pearl Road in Torrington. These panels are adjacent to a community park and recreation field. It is also adjacent to farmland. I live very close to this area. On my daily walks, I love the natural view of the ball field and the farmland. Please keep this area the way it is now for the community to enjoy nature at its purest state. Thank you, Susan Fritsch. And that concludes our public comments that were submitted to us for this meeting.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into item number two on the agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held June 1st, 2020. I heard Councilwoman Wagner, do you have a second?
Second, Councilwoman Rouette.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. Are there questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Motion carries. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for July 6th, 2020, at 6:30 PM to review and discuss proposals for participation in the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act program.
Rubino, move it.
Thank you, Councilman Rubino. Wagner, thank you. So I have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, item four on the agenda is a roll call vote on the THS building project. So I need a motion to adopt Resolution Number 143-205, formally accepting the Planning and Zoning Commission's favorable review and referral of the THS building project to the Board of Councilmen. Do a motion.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Wagner, second.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the, on the motion? Hearing none, all in, oh, roll call, I'm sorry. So I'll start with Councilman Cavanaro.
There.
I heard him.
Okay, was that?
That was no.
And that was a no? Okay.
That was a no, no.
Thank you. Councilman Rubino?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Rouette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wagner?
Yes.
And Councilman Oliver?
No.
All right, so we have, oh, we have a tie. A lot of flinging.
Does that mean the round?
So Mayor, this is just the meeting. This isn't talking about the referendum. That's the other agenda item. Is that correct?
So yeah, this is just the acceptance of planning and zoning's recommendation. So with a tie that goes to me to break the tie, and I will vote in favor of adoption of the, excuse me, Resolution 143205. So the motion passes. Now, the next item on the agenda is also a roll call vote, and this is to accept the recommendation of the Board of Finance to adopt Resolution Number 143205. Before I ask for this motion, I just want to talk a little bit about what happened last Thursday. So on June 11th, the Board of Finance met, and they voted three to two in favor of the resolution to appropriate 149, excuse me, 159,575,000 dollars for the construction of a new high school, new middle school, new central offices, and the demolition of the old high school. During the meeting, the Board of Finance, there was a considerable discussion regarding the recommendation to council for establishing the referendum date. Three of the five members that spoke requested the referendum question be placed on the November election ballot, which would be on November 3rd. While the discussion did not result in a formal vote or motion, they did express their desire that I convey that information to the City Council. Subsequent to that motion, I did receive a request for further information about voting trends on referendum questions. And John, I don't know if you could put up on the screen the information that we have. So just so that everybody is aware, what we did is we went back and we looked at the last, one, two, three, four, five, six, six referendum questions that were placed on ballots. And as you can see, back in 2003, it was a standalone referendum for the Toynford School renovation project, and 12% of our voters turned out for that referendum vote. On January 9th of 2007, there was a standalone referendum question for the City Hall renovation, which referendum failed, but again, only 11.8% of the voters turned out for that standalone. Later that year in December, the City Hall renovation committee came back out and proposed a scaled-down cost for the City Hall renovation. This particular referendum occurred during, as I recall, a very bad snowstorm, and as you can see, only 7.64% of the voters turned out for that referendum. Thereafter, we had three referendums on November, it says November 1st, but it was actually the regular election ballot of 2012, which was a presidential election. There were five charter revision questions placed on the ballot. All five questions were answered, and as you can see, 54.62% of the voters took the time to read those questions and answer them. In November of 2014, during a gubernatorial election, our WPC improvement referendum question was placed on the ballot, and 51.5% of the voters answered the referendum question. And then again, in November of 2018, more recently during a gubernatorial election, for the road pavement program, the roof in the animal control facility, the TMS roof, we had 58.2% of the voters take the time to read those questions and answer them. And John, I don't know if you can pull up what the ballot looked like on that president? You can, excellent. So just because I know that there's a great deal of concern or question about how these referendum questions appear on the ballot and whether they might potentially be overlooked, especially in a presidential election. So I think it was Carol that fished this copy of the ballot that was done back in 2012. And you can see these referendum questions are actually first, really, on the ballot itself, above the candidates. And because there were so many of that, that was the year we had the five for the, for the charter revision, they sort of wrapped around the ballot there. But again, that was the year that we had, 54.62% of the voters did take the time to read each one of those questions and answer them. So the reason I bring this to you, not only because the Board of Finance asked that I share with you their thoughts, but there was a request from a council member that I provide the voting trends. And as we're about to move into item five, which is a roll call vote to accept a recommendation, the, on page three of that resolution, it does have a proposed election date or referendum date, which is Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020. This is the date the Board of Education requested that the referendum be held. And what I wanted to do was just to make sure that, because the council has not had any discussions regarding the referendum date itself, I wanted to make sure that before we move into the next item, that there's a clear understanding of what referendum date you wish to be inserted in this resolution. And with that said, I'll open the floor for discussion.
Mayor, I, you know, had, I have been one to support the renovation, the project. I have not really been supportive of a September 22nd date. So if we could amend this resolution to the date, the November election, I would be supporting the resolution. So I don't know if you want me to propose an amendment to the existing vote, or how you want to do this.
I'm thinking maybe if you do that in the form of a motion, and I can get a second, we can amend the resolution. It's not even amending it, it's just, you know, properly, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm looking up the November date, but I'm sure Carol is there to remind me what November, is it November 2nd or November 3rd is the election day?
Third.
The third. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution to November, Tuesday, November 3rd.
Wagner will second that. I'm sorry, do I have a second?
Yes, Wagner.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to, to request the resolution read as proposed with the amendment to page three under be it further resolved that the referendum be held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. Are there questions or comments on that motion?
Well, my only comment is that I supported this right from the beginning because of the time and resources that have been involved by many people, not only the Board of Education members, but members from the community, you know, to work towards this project. And I do think it's up to the voters to make the decision in terms of whether or not they go out for $159 million, which in my mind, I wish it was much lower than that. But this is, this is a vote for the people, and if you're getting a, if history has shared with us that we get more out for a election, and particularly this kind of referendum, we need to move it to the November date. So that's my opinion, and I will support the resolution with that amendment, or with that change in the section.
Okay. So if there are another comments on the motion to insert the date of November 3rd on this resolution, this doesn't need to be a roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Wait a minute, wait a minute, one more time, Mayor. Just so I'm clear, we're voting, the vote is for specifically the date or for the entire agenda item?
Specifically for the date.
So this is really a secondary motion? You should have been.
It is a secondary motion. Yeah, yes.
Okay, so can we rewordsmith that, that a secondary motion has been made to establish the date as November 3rd, and then we'll vote on that? Then we go back to the primary motion and vote on that?
Correct.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mary. I'm sorry, has the primary motion been moved?
Actually, the primary motion hasn't been moved. I was looking for this date before I made that primary motion, which would be the adoption of the resolution. So I was really looking just to insert the date in the resolution before asking for approval of the resolution.
Mayor?
Yes.
Are you hearing me? Okay, this has nothing to do with my vote on the primary resolution. What I would just recommend is that it does make sense to me to put it the date of the presidential, for all the obvious reasons, and I would just recommend, at least that the city, in lieu of, you know, people who have made knowledgeable comments about the fact that this can easily get lost in a major election year, that the city at every polling place simply put up a whiteboard, a card, to say, don't forget, please also vote on this today, and just put that at each polling place, you know? People are going to be theoretically waiting in line to vote, and I think that sort of takes the onus off that resolution getting lost in the presidential race. Just a sign, just that Jonathan's great at this stuff. Jonathan, make a sign. Don't forget.
Yeah. I just want to add, there was a lot of education on different referendums that we've had, and the water treatment plant, if you remember.
I mean, there was opportunities on cablevision and articles in the paper, and I would hope that the Board of Education would, and I'm assuming that they will be educating the public at large, you know, through whatever mediums we have at this time, whether it be Zoom webinars, whatever opportunity that might, you know, present itself. But I agree with Paul that whatever we can do to make sure that people, whether you're for or against, you have knowledge of the project.
And I would just add, I know that there was discussion a couple of weeks ago when we were talking about the cost of referendum. What what I had stated at the time was that this was usually a standalone referendum would be somewhere around thirty thousand dollars. That thirty thousand dollars breaks down to about ten thousand dollars to open one polling place and to staff that and print the ballots. And then the written material or promotional material reminding the voters that there is a referendum question on the ballot was a separate mailing that we did when it came to the pavement management program or the road pavement, TMS roof and animal control facility. That was about thirteen thousand dollars. And then, of course, legal fees and the financial financial advice makes up the difference, the balance of that thirty thousand dollar expense. I think when I look at these percentages of voter participation in referendum questions, and I look at the fifty-eight percent that participated in the November two thousand and eighteen, that was the year that we're most familiar with, where that written material was sent out to all of our voters, not only our residential voters, but those non-residential taxpayers that are also allowed to vote on bonding and borrowing matters. So I think you're right. The success of the referendum questions really lies within the written material. And I can't call it promotional material because you cannot use taxpayers' resources to advocate for or oppose a referendum. You can only provide facts about the referendum. So those are the fine lines that we'll be making sure that we follow. And Sandy Dawson from Pullman and Comley has been our advisor on this, and she and I spoke last week where corporation counsel will be looped in to review any of that written material before it's mailed, just to make sure that there is no violation of election laws with that promotional material. So it's a point well made to Councilman Kevin Arrow. Are there other questions or comments on, I'm calling it a sub motion, but it's it's a motion to insert the date of November third into the resolution?
That will also, this is Rabino.
Yes.
As part of the resolution, section one will show the date and section two on page four will show the date also.
Yeah, I thought there were three sections on here.
Yeah, page three shows September twenty-second, and page four shows September twenty-second. Approved above and September twenty-second again.
Okay.
So just looking at the resolution, those two pages I saw is the only two.
So just to cover our bases, anywhere where there is a reference to the referendum date, we'll read November third of two thousand and twenty. If there are other questions or comments, then I think just to be consistent, I will do this with roll call, starting with Councilman Cavanaro.
Yes.
Councilman Rabino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruette.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wagner.
Yes.
And Councilman Oliver.
Yes.
Okay. So moving into item five then, which is the approval of the or adoption of resolution. Again, it's a roll call vote to accept the recommendation of the Board of Finance and adopt Resolution one four three dash two zero four, authorizing the appropriation of one hundred and fifty-nine million five hundred and seventy-five thousand for the construction of a new high school, new middle school, new central administration office, and the demolition of the existing Torrington High School, and the financing of said appropriation for the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city of Torrington, and notes in anticipation of said bonds in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-nine million five hundred and seventy-five thousand, therefore, as well as establishing the date of November third, two thousand and twenty for a referendum, and any other matters, including the preparation and printing of explanatory text. Do I have a motion? Wagner.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Ruette.
Okay, so motion and second. Roll call vote, Councilman Cavanaro.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, well, barely.
Yes. Could I make a comment before the vote?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. I will vote. I am voting against this. And I'm voting against this for the reasons I articulated at the last meeting. First, to just set the record straight, I did not attend the meetings that were held the year prior in terms of, you know, rethinking, revisioning, whatever the actual title of this project was called. But I had many occasions to speak with Board Chair Capabianca, and she well knows this, and she knew this at the last meeting. We spoke many times about this. My particular work schedule involves me typically working afternoons and evenings. That's when, you know, I work in a sports broadcast company, and that's when we make our money, and that's when we work. But I had many occasions to speak about what my priorities were as far as moving the district forward. And they have been for many years the same, which is to say we needed a fully articulated curriculum, beginning theoretically, you know, kindergarten, realistically kindergarten through third grade is always going to be about the same, mastering the fundamentals. Prior to that, so basically, you're going to curriculum that's great for, you know, through senior year high school, and theoretically, I would look for a curriculum that went not just K twelve, but K fourteen, which was a STEM curriculum, again, fully integrated throughout that run of classes, number one. Number two, I often said, I think Torrington actually needs two of these primary curricula, okay? One would be the STEM, which would attract, again, be attractive to many kinds of people considering moving to Torrington. The second one would be the healthcare industry and healthcare professional background preparation. As a matter of fact, when I was last on the Board of Education, running School Improvement Committee, it was a, we developed a curriculum specifically for that. The superintendent at the time, prior to the current superintendent, never really got behind the idea. And it, and therefore, it never went forward. And years and years later, here we are again. But I think if that would be my proposal, whatever, whatever the Board of Education and the administration came up with as a curriculum, I would like to see that first. Also incorporating, regardless, I understand and appreciate the vast amount of work and the number of meetings that went into preparing this, this, all these background documents. The fact of the matter is, the hard fact of the matter is, quarantining has changed the landscape fundamentally for all manner of work, okay? And I think there is an opportunity, and I've read in many places, there is an opportunity here to rethink utilizing remote learning in such a way that our high-performing students can work from home X number of days a week. Our less, you know, essentially, your A students, I don't want to get this specific, but you're then you're not as high-performing students may be capable of doing that one day a week. If you look at the sum total of number of days a week that students could work remotely from home, you could then start to break out all kinds of savings, I would think, in terms of, you know, busing, in terms of food prep, in terms of insurance costs for doing this kind of thing. What I'm proposing, what I'm saying is, I think I would very much prefer that that this administration, this Board of Education, take the next year to really think about what a curriculum would look like, an integrated curriculum, which we have the huge benefit in Torrington, the huge benefit in Torrington of literally being next door to Alver Wilkert Tech, okay? And the ability to be able to leverage those assets concurrently and together is almost unprecedented in the state. And we'd be foolish not to really look at that. And that goes, Mayor, to my thinking of what a building, new building would be. For any reporters out there, if you're going to write on me and 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 put this out, please note that I completely agree, we need a new school. We need a new school. I get this. I do. But my overwhelming preference would be to push the administration and the Board of Ed to come up with a curriculum and a new mode of delivering education that addresses the key, key question of how are we going to do this cheaper? We cannot continue to spend this much money per capita, per student going forward. The system won't allow it. There isn't the money to do it. So therefore, with the possibilities of remote learning on on the table in front of us, in our face, literally as I speak, it is, we should be doing this in the next year. Once we have some much firmer and clearer ideas of how we can do education cheaper and better, not just cheaper, but better, then let's talk about the school. And if you're going to, for instance, where it would impact, Mayor, is if we did talk about leveraging assets with Alver Wilkert Tech, how does that affect the footprint of where you would actually put your buildings? So that there would be an easy way for students to migrate between the two schools. That would be part of the infrastructure, the actual concrete and mortar plans to do that. Let's work that all out first with a with a with a comprehensive plan. Then we'll give you the money. Then I would absolutely support the budget, and I would be your biggest advocate to get a new building to support that vision. But where it is now, to me, this is the cart before the horse. And it does not, I think it does not incentivize the administration to do the very really hard work that it takes to develop that kind of new curriculum with a new mode of utilizing remote learning. And my final point, and then I'll see the floor, is we're all on this application together, okay? It's remarkable how much work we all get done in our daily lives with this. And this is Fred Flintstone technology, what we're doing, what we're using right now. This is one point zero of what this is. Where this is going to go in the months and years ahead is going to be light speed beyond this. So the ability for high-performing students and and good students to be able to utilize this kind of technology times ten is, needs to be considered in in how we can deliver, not only, again, cheaper and better, but a more, but a but a mode of learning that is much more aligned with how industries of the future work, okay? In these kinds of environments where you work in teams, and you work in teams that are very fluid, throughout the day, they're fluid. And I swear to God, kids, the high-performing and and the solid students who will be able to then define when they want to meet together on their terms to do a project, they will, they will be putting in more time per day, developing their educational stuff, and the results, I think, would be significantly better for all involved. And therefore, I think we need to step back, do those kinds of things first, then talk about the building that will most optimize those plans. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The floor is still open for comments before I call the motion. Are there other questions or comments? Aye. Then roll call. Councilman Cavanaro. Councilman Rabino.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Ruette.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wagner.
Yes.
Councilman Oliver.
No.
So another tie that I will break. And before I cast my vote, I just want to express my, you know, my thoughts. I mean, I don't, I do not disagree with what Councilman Cavanaro is saying about this pandemic-changing things for education here in the city of Torrington. It is a game changer for workforce and education. I agree. I think that there's a lot of education of the proposal that needs to take place for the public to fully understand the long-term ramifications of building another school, building two new schools, you know, and what happens to the buildings that are left, including central office building, you know, so is, you know, if we're reducing our elementary school inventory and the central office building, there's a lot of information that I think that the the public deserves to hear before they vote on this. However, I can't discount the fact that two years of work has taken place on this matter. And I'm reflecting on one remark that was made early in the presentation that the Board of Education made to the city council. And that was a request that that six people not be asked to be in a, put in a position to make a decision of this magnitude, but that the taxpayers and voters make that decision. So for that reason, I am going to vote in favor of the resolution. And do look forward to working with the Board of Education and making sure that that education and all of that information is done in such a manner that we have the best informed voters that come to the polls on November third. So with that, I'll move into item number six on the agenda, which is a presentation discussion and possible vote regarding Verge's proposed Torrington Solar One project at East Pearl Road. And we have Brian Fitzgerald from Verge that is prepared to make that presentation.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Carbone. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you. Yeah, I'm not, I assume everybody else can hear.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, and Jonathan, I can share my screen if that's okay with you. We do have a presentation. We'll walk through.
Go for it.
Great, thank you. Mayor Carbone and city council members, thank you for having us this evening. Like Mayor Carbone was mentioning, my name is Brian Fitzgerald from Verge. We represent Torrington Solar One. And on with, on with me this evening is Will Herschel, our CEO of Verge, Stephen DiNino, our COO of Verge, myself, Brian Fitzgerald, Kyle Perry, who's our project engineer. And on with us from Allpoint Technology Corporations is Brad Parsons. He is our professional engineer, as well as Patrick McGowan from Gaffney Bennett Public Relations. This has been the core to our Torrington Solar One project team, so thankful that they can all join us this evening for this, for this meeting, and thanks again for taking the time. We appreciate it. So getting into it here, Torrington Solar One, we'll take a quick look at a company overview and then get into the project overview. We'll also take a look at some of the public outreach and then move into the design progression, where we started from day one versus where we are now and what happened in between. And then from there, we'll look at the specifics of our final design, our site plan, and a few renderings. Then we'll talk about the project benefits themselves, the tax revenue, permitting fees, potential virtual net metering, savings benefits via the state programs. So getting into it, Verge is a renewable energy development company here in Connecticut. We are based in Hartford. We focus on solar technology with, we work with municipalities, state agencies, small and large businesses and landowners across New England, the broader U.S., as well as have a primary focus here in Connecticut. Our executives have been developing, operating, maintaining, and constructing solar energy arrays since two thousand and ten and before, and we do have quite a bit, quite a bit of experience in this field and have a a sound understanding of of what it takes to develop and operate a project here in Connecticut. So the project itself is located at 236 East Pearl Road. We are talking about a 1.9 megawatt AC. Solar project that consists of about 7,150 solar panels. Mounted on a driven post fixed tilt racking system for string level inverters. So the electricity production from the system is going to be remotely monitored. As well as it can be de-energized remotely as well. So from here, the parcel itself is about 66 and a half acres. The project area inside the fence. Our total project area is about 11 and a half acres. Now that's the entire area itself inside the fence with a couple of stormwater quality management basins. And the area of the panels themselves is actually quite a bit smaller, so we will have. You know, module plane width of about 12 and a half feet with inter row spacing of about 16 feet. So there's going to be. Quite a bit of green area in between our panels in between each row. And it's important to note that these are oriented in the southern direction tilted about 30 degrees. So from here, moving into site selection and, you know, we've really get asked this question a lot. How'd you come across the site? You know, why'd you pick this parcel? And there are quite a bit of criteria that go into finding a parcel. That we believe is going to have no adverse environmental impact and that can host a solar energy project. And really, there's three main criteria. Now, a big focus in the state of Connecticut nowadays is designing a project to meet Connecticut deep standards from stormwater general permit perspective. And that means after the parcel, it's very, that's very flat in nature. And this partial, this parcel is that. So we have gradual slopes moving from north to south in about two to four degrees. Two to 4% grade, excuse me. We are not proposing any clearing of forest habitat or any removal of of trees and, you know, an acre and acreage size quantities. And we're really not proposing any tree clearing at all. So there's, there's going to be very minimal disturbance to the site as it is today. And then the third key, key aspect to these projects is having close proximity to electrical infrastructure. Which we do at Torrington Street. So on Torrington Street is good ever source three phase distribution network that we are going to be interconnecting to. From the facility itself. So that's key in these projects. Sometimes that can, that can lead to the demise of the success of a project all in itself. And it is, it was important to us that we found out from every source, we do have a good interconnection capacity at this site. So moving into public need and what we mean when we say public need is that. The project is aligned with the state of Connecticut's energy goals. So from that perspective, the project is going to provide clean renewable solar powered electricity. And it's going to assist the state in meeting its legislatively mandated applications. Under the current, under the current renewable portfolio standard. And that mandate is a 40% class one electricity resource. Percentage allocation by the year 2030. And this project is a class one generating energy resource and it's going to help Connecticut meet those goals. And then again, we are talking about about 3,560 megawatt hours of class one renewable energy. Expected to be produced in the first year of operation. So just a quick equivalent offset, that's about 2,517 metric tons of carbon emissions annually. Or the equivalent of powering about 426 houses each year. Another key aspect of the project is that's going to produce most of its power at peak times when demand for electricity is the greatest. So a couple of key characteristics about Torrington Solar One specifically. So like we mentioned in the in the previous slide about site selection. It's important to note here that we have a very, very simple construction process identified on this project with very minor site work and limited, if any, tree removal. From there, we expect Torrington Solar One to be very quiet neighbor with minimal onset activity post-construction. And again, there's going to be no emissions or odor produced or emitted by the facility itself. So the array is effectively silent. If you were to be walking through the interior of the ray, you would most likely hear an ambient hum produced by the inverters themselves. So a key aspect of the project is that Torrington Solar One is not going to require any city services. And there's not going to be any increase of traffic. There's going to be no water consumption. There's no fuel consumption. There is no discharge of emissions or water from that perspective either. And it's going to be an economic contributor to the city of Torrington. And we're going to get into more detail on the following slides. And then just to touch on an environmental component. So the work that we've completed to date in conjunction with Allpoint Technology and a few of their consultants. Has culminated into an environmental assessment, which has been submitted to the Connecticut Siting Council and is currently publicly available on their website. To be read through, but really, you know, in our analysis, we had, you know, come to the conclusion that the project would not have an undue environmental. Adverse impact on the site or the surrounding ecology. And then ultimately, that's going to be the Connecticut Siting Council's decision to either. Agree or disagree or or provide recommendations. So that's the process that we're moving into now. So from here, we're going to touch on public outreach. And we'll take it back to December of 2019 when we had an official pre-filing meeting, city officials. Then from there through January, February, in the winter months, we had continued communications on a semi regular basis. The city officials providing updates, letting letting them know where the project stood and and what our current expected timelines were. From there in March, we had an initial preliminary meeting with a few of the neighbors in the East Pearl neighborhood. And it's important to note that this was a digital meeting. This is at the rise of the of the COVID pandemic in the in the United States, so we did have a digital meeting. And then moving into April 21st specifically here. We had delivered introductory letters and fact sheets and FAQ documents to abutting property owners of the entire parcel. To the entire 66 acre parcel itself. So from there in May, we held continued community outreach. On and off communications, answering different questions. And then on May 12th, we had a press release that was pushed live through a few of the major. In article, excuse me, that ran in a few of the major Connecticut news outlets here, Connecticut Post, the Litchfield County Times, the Registered Citizen. And really, that was, that was a part of our proactive public outreach campaign. In conjunction with Patrick McGowan at Gaffney Bennett Public Relations. When we pushed our public outreach campaign live in April, we reached out to a number of news outlets and connected with the Registered Citizen. And ended up doing an article on May 12th there. So for May 12th, on May 18th, we hosted our first of two public meetings where we had another Zoom meeting. With neighboring property owners and and really it was open to the public. On this meeting, we had six representatives from Vergey and about six and then seven. Residents who joined the call with us. We gave a very similar presentation. We we answered questions. We talked about timeline. You know, we walked through some scenarios of the project and really just kind of. Had a lot of back and forth conversation and answer a lot of questions. And then from there, like I said, on May 20th, we had a second public meeting in three days. Where we gave another very similar presentation, walked through, you know, some more questions and dove a little deeper into the project itself. And then on May, May 27th, we gave a presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission where we. Gave a similar but altered presentation to the zoning commission members and answered again. A set of questions on citing, site selection, you know, environmental benefits. Potential impacts on the development itself. Then on May 28th, we delivered formal notices via certified mail to every abutting property owner. On behalf of our, the start of our Connecticut Siting Council petition filing process. And then on May 29th, filed the petition with the Connecticut Siting Council. So a couple of quick stats on the public outreach campaign here. On the left of this screen, we have three images of materials that were delivered in those initial community outreach back in April. Now on the right of the screen here, we have statistics from the website that was made live back in April as well. So we can see here on the left of our screen that that runs around the on the horizontal axis, we have weeks. From April 20th all the way through June 15th, start of this week. And running on the vertical axis, we have number of page views. So you can see when we pushed the campaign live, we had about 50 page views. So we can tell there's a little bit of feedback, maybe some some traffic to the website. It it went low for a little bit and then right around the time of our article published in the Registered Citizen. Connecticut Post and Litchfield County Times, we had a spike to over 400 page views. So at this point, we had quite a bit of visibility into the project. And then really, from here, we kind of came back to an average of right below 50 page views per week. And then had our public meetings on May 18th, May 20th. And then a presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission on the 27th. And then filed the petition with the Siding Council on May 29th. So just a key aspect of our public outreach campaign from the start, it's been our goal to be, you know, very transparent, very in front of the public. And make sure everyone had the ability to, you know, ask questions, reach out to us and just. You know, really voice their concerns and that's what we've been able to accomplish here over the last two to three months. So getting into a bit of a design progression. So version one, we had a much larger 3.5 megawatt array set on 17 acres. With a 50 foot, with a 50 foot front yard setback and access on Torrington Street. And we'll take, from there, and we'll take a look at the designs themselves in a minute here, but from there in version two. After we dove into some of the environmental conditions of the site, have the wetland habitat delineated completely. We reduced our project size from 3.5 megawatts to 1.9 megawatts. And ultimately had a project area reduction down to 12 and a half, 12 and a half acres. So an overall reduction of about 36% in capacity and about 26% in in acreage used. And it was at this point where we had to change our access from Torrington Street to East Pearl due to the wetland habitat. That was delineated on the western side of the parcel. And here is a view of our first initial site plan. Where we have that 3.5 megawatt array and you can see we're using. A broader portion of the parcel for orientation. We have East Pearl Road to the north. We have Harrison Road in the town of New Hartford to the east. And then we have Torrington Street to the west. And then our version two design, you can see it is much more condensed. Like we said, we had had that about 26% reduction in acreage down to 12 acres. As we had a wetland habitat delineated here that extended through the woods, through the fields. Which which eliminated the ability for us to install panels on this section of the parcel. So. With that, the project area itself is is. Is designed to be with outside of all posted wetland boundaries. So version three of our design, and it's important to note that the the key design changes from version two to version three and ultimately the version we submitted to the Connecticut Siting Council. Happened, you know, in the later stages of development after we had had a number of conversations with with neighboring property owners to the north. And worked through a few, a few ways we could change the design to try and accommodate some requests. You know, increased landscaping efforts, relocation of the access road, increasing the front yard setback from 50 feet to 75 feet. So these were the mechanisms, sorry, these were the modifications that we made to our design. As a result of our, of our public outreach and our consultation with neighbors in this area. And what it resulted in was a system size where we had reduced the module count by 7%. To 7,150 modules from our previous version two design. We were not able to relocate those modules elsewhere on the parcel. So we had to get rid of them entirely and that shrunk our project area from 12 and a half acres to about 11 and a half acres. And this is the design here, which is version three, which we have. Essentially finalized and. Submitted to the Connecticut Siting Council. And then again, for orientation with Torrington Street here to our west. East Pearl Road to our north. We have Harrison Road and the town of New Hartford to our east. And you can see here, so the the black lines you see horizontal running across the page are the rows of modules, like I said, about 12 and a half. Feet of module plane width. And then the space in between is about 16 feet of row spacing in between each row of modules. So we have tucked the access road out into the corner here in the northeast corner of the parcel. And then plan on making interconnection to Torrington Street out here to the west. So moving on from version three here, we'll get into some of the visual renderings that were produced by Allpoint Technology Corporation. And then just a quick note in our landscaping protocol, like I mentioned from the previous slide, we did add quite a bit of landscaping to soften views from the north and from the west. So. Working with Allpoint, we went with a a two row staggered approach, you know, 10 foot on center for the first row and then effectively five foot on center. In total with the second row being staggered. And we did this to try and accomplish a a much better screening technique. So here's our view set, viewshed analysis map. And again, we have the town of New Hartford here to the east. We have East Pearl Road to the north. We have Torrington Street to the west. And photo number one here that we'll look at first is from the location identified as number one. Number two here, that's from East Pearl Road, excuse me. And then photo two here is from the parking lot at the Bishop Donnelly Field. Photo three is from a northern angle on Torrington Street. And then photo number four, which we'll look at, is from the west on Torrington Street where the project has frontage. And where we will be making interconnection. So again, here, here is photo one and here's what it looked like at the end of the winter, early spring. And here is what we projected it'll look like after construction and the installation of mature arborvitae's. Net staggered formation with a large eight foot fence with. A black mono fence with vinyl slats as well. That's photo one from East Pearl Road looking south and the distance to the site is about 120 feet here. Then we are in the Bishop Donnelly Field parking lot. This is photo two. And here's what it looked like again, late winter, early spring. We're about 500 feet to the site here. And here is what we anticipate it'll look like afterwards resembling in outfield fence essentially here, but that same eight foot tall security fence. Black vinyl coated with black vinyl slats as well. Moving into photo three, looking south from Torrington Street at to the north. We are about just under two tenths of a mile to the project site here. Beforehand, again, this photo is taken earlier, this winter, early spring. And then there is what it looks like afterwards, after construction. Then moving into photo four, again, here we are, we are currently standing in Torrington Street looking east. The distance to the site is just over a tenth of a mile here. And here's what it looked like earlier this winter, early spring. And here's what we anticipated it'll look like after construction and we have added in. A mixture of fir, cedar and spruce trees again in that modified landscaping protocol where we have, you know, a staggered approach as to provide. You know, more, more screening from this area here. And you can see. The array area would be beyond these trees here. So moving on from the design, the visibility analysis, we'll get into the project benefit summary. And most importantly here to touch on economic benefits to Torrington, just a couple of key features will be a new tax, a new taxpayer. You know, where the economic benefits can be coming from. Again, will be a new taxpayer. We intend on pulling, building an electrical permits and paying those permit fees, obviously. So you're going to earn in tax dollars, permitting fees. And then with the opportunity to provide electricity savings through virtual net metering, which is a state level program that's available here from municipalities. And state entities across Connecticut and EverSource. So the graph here on our right, we have a couple of items going on here. To start from the left, we have. Proposed property tax payments here in blue. That go across the horizontal axis. In orange, we have layered in expected or anticipated virtual net metering savings if this becomes a reality for the project itself. And this is a proposed savings based off of a few of metrics. Then in gray here, in year one, we have our permitting fees. And then you can see the gold line that moves increasingly across the graph is the cumulative benefit. If all three revenue streams, including virtual net metering were to come to fruition. And then again, here we are, you know, this is the new economic development in clean energy infrastructure. Helping Connecticut meet its legislatively mandated energy goals set forth in the renewable portfolio standard. Newest project wood power of 426 houses each year with no local emissions, no water use, no impact to groundwater resources as well. So from there, touching on tax stabilization specifically, it was a key component of the previous graph, but now we're looking at it here in in more detail. And just a couple of things to touch on again. This project proposes to increase the tax revenue and tax base to the city with little to no jaw on existing town resources. And and what we mean by that is. You know, the the project, we're not going to send any kids to school. There's going to be no traffic or congestion concerns. There's going to be no use to to Torrington. Public resources or facilities outside of that at all. And from that perspective, you know, the property is currently untaxed. Everything we are providing is, you know, 100% benefits. Year over year here for an anticipated initial term of 20 years. Touching on tax stabilization here specifically, so we have requested a fixed TSA from the project according to Connecticut general statutes. 32 dash 71A enables the city and the project to enter into this agreement. And we have based. And we have based this initial tax stabilization rate at $7,000 per megawatt AC, which is a total payment each year of about $13,825 fixed for a 20-year term. And what that means is we've got a cumulative benefit over here over 20 years of greater than $250,000. And again, that's, you know, putting no burden on Torrington resources or services. And then a quick note here, so this current legislation proposed that fixes property taxes for class one renewable generating resources like solar at $5,000 per megawatt AC, but our starting position on this offering would be a payment of $7,000 per megawatt AC. And then a quick slide here on the potential virtual net metering benefit. So like we mentioned, this was item three in the potential economic benefits to Torrington. And virtual net metering is a program that's been around here in Connecticut since, I believe, 2012 or 2013. A lot of municipalities and state agencies have participated in the program. And it's been, it's been so popular to an extent that the funding for the program is currently capped, but there's proposed legislation this year to increase that funding, which would prompt us to partner with Torrington and try to work together in a collaboration and a submission into the waitlist or the queue in this program pending that legislatively increased funding. And what this means specifically is that Torrington will be able to purchase the electricity produced by the solar energy system at a discount comparatively speaking to the credit that would get allocated to the bill. And when we say bill, this project would offset about 98% to 99% of the electricity usage at five city facilities. And I believe those facilities, you know, would have been the fire department, the police station, city hall, the public works, art facility, and then the water pollution control authority, the bog facility itself. So again, the benefit there is the, is purchasing renewable energy at a discount and being able to realize savings, quite a bit of savings in excess of, you know, $1.6 billion share projected over a 20-year term. So the goal for us would be to partner with Torrington and try and pursue that program and pursue a spot on that waitlist with this project, knowing that it could drastically increase the amount of benefits to the project itself and the city as well. So from that perspective, one other key component to tax stabilization and virtual net metering is that, as it stands currently today, if the project is participating in the virtual net metering program and allocates 100% of its credits, it would be tax exempt and not be subject to paying personal property taxes to the host municipality, which has been a bit of a pain point in the state and where the proposed legislation came from to fix those property taxes. And with that said, it would be our goal, whether we have virtual net metering with Torrington or another entity, to enter into this tax stabilization agreement and pay the fair share of taxes for the project, just so that we can stay consistent and ensure Torrington as the host municipality gets the benefit of the property tax payments as well as hopefully the virtual net metering savings as well. So that was a key component to these projects and really what sparked that legislation to try and get pushed forward so that every municipality participates, gets a benefit, including host municipalities and beneficial accounts as well. So from that perspective, Mayor Carbone and city council members, that concludes the presentation we had prepared tonight. Like I said, we do have, you know, a number of our colleagues on the phone tonight. You know, we are more than happy and prepared to, you know, ask, answer any questions, go walk through any key aspects of the project. We can go back to the deck. So I'll let you take it from here if that's okay.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
So to the council, are there questions that Brian or his team from Verge might be able to answer regarding the project or solar? I hear a very faint voice in the background. Is that Mr. Cavanaro?
It's David.
Oh, David, okay.
Sorry. I'm just curious to know what other sites were considered for the project, if any at all.
Yes, great question. And this is Brian Fitzgerald here from Verge. And we look at dozens and dozens of sites. You know, we send, you know, dozens of letters out to landowners across the state of Connecticut every week looking for new project sites. We have, you know, been surrounding municipalities. You know, we've looked at New Hartford, Bristol, Litchfield, a number of sites, including municipal landfills, some of which are available, some of which are not, some of which are undeveloped and undevelopable from a solar perspective. So there is quite a bit of site selection, excuse me, there's quite a bit of volume that you need to sift through in order to find a good site, which led us to the site here.
In Torrington, I meant, were there other potential sites that would accommodate the array for the feasibility other than a residential? I had said, is there, are there other sites that would have also accommodated the solar project other than residential neighborhood that you're considering in this site?
Great question. This is Brian Fitzgerald here again. So that's, like I said, we look at a number of locations and, you know, currently in Torrington, there's not another specific location that we are looking through. Like I mentioned, one of the key components to site selection is, you know, the core forest habitat and not proposing clearing and clearcutting of, you know, tens and tens of acreage for the installation of solar panels. And like we found in Torrington, there's quite a big forest habitat and it's pretty topographical up in that region of the state as well. So from that perspective, a lot of parcels get weeded out from a suitability perspective as well as an environmental impact perspective.
Mayor, what about our existing, that space, that property?
So the question to me, I know that in prior years, we had quite a few discussions regarding the, I know, I don't know whose clack that is, it is the Bewitching Out. Yeah, we had quite a few discussions about potential solar array landfill, which still poses great potential for that kind of development. But with Verge, that was certainly not a, it wasn't a discussion that we had with this particular company.
Would the company be interested in looking at that site? I just see it living up here and driving by that on a fairly regular basis. I just think that there, I'm not against solar at all. I think it's a great company. I'm glad we're doing this. I'm just trying to find a less, just a better place for it than where it is being proposed.
So I probably want to give a full disclosure here before I make my comments. I think you all know I live on Torrington Street. And we have farmland that's actually right across the street that's owned by actually myself and my sisters. So, and the property that's being proposed actually was farmland leased by the Cemetery Association for over 50 years. My father, I think it was a dollar a year at one point. And there was a contingency that it would always be agricultural land. So I mentioned that, you know, because I'm still gonna, there's really no vote here tonight. It's just a presentation and the council really has the ability to either give a positive commentary to the sitting council or not, and through our mayor. So obviously you can imagine I'm opposed to the project. It is directly across the street from residential. I think one of my nephew actually mentioned that most solar projects that he's seen is in a much rural area, top of a farm that's not surrounded by residential. Gaylord Lane is, you know, right there as well. And I know, Brian, you have been all but kind in your presentations and your considerations. And I really want to share that. But, you know, in the public outreach, you know, this has been a pandemic, you know, ever since, you know, I know December was a very quick presentation, so really not until later in the time of the pandemic, because I know you wanted to meet face to face and we could only do a Zoom meeting, probably one of my first. But, you know, so there are very few people that have actually been hearing about the project or learning about the project as much of an effort that you've made. So my concern is, because now I know there are people across the street who are putting up signs and we actually run an ice cream stand at the farm and more and more questions are coming to us that, you know, with really no knowledge of the project other than what we're providing. So I think you haven't had the opportunity to really do a good public outreach with the entire community, as hard as you've tried. And I credit you for the work that you've done. But I too, you know, would support solar. I do have some apprehension in terms of how it will affect. I'm a big bird person, so we have everything from blue herons to red-tailed hawks to any kind of birds that you can imagine, because we do have a pond that's right there that's quite an aviary for wildlife. So you can take the woodchucks over there because we don't need them on the farmland. Other than that, I am concerned about the wildlife in that area. So I know, again, you've worked very hard in what you've been able to do in terms of a public outreach, but I think there needs to be more. But I guess I'll just be quiet now because I've probably said enough. But other members of the council, I'll let you ask the questions.
So the floor is still open. I don't know.
Ask some questions, Mayor.
Yes, please. Councilman Kevin.
All right. One thing, what is the relationship, the corporate, the company itself is Verge, is that correct? Who will own this, Verge, the property?
The, excuse me, Brian Fitzgerald, the solar energy array itself, yes. Torrington Solar One LLC is a wholly owned subsidiary of Verge. We do not have.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing. I'm not sure if it's my computer or yours.
Oh, cool. Sorry about that. This is Brian Fitzgerald from Verge.
Yes, sir.
And so Torrington Solar One LLC is a wholly owned subsidiary of Verge, which is developing and constructing the array itself. We do not, we will not have an ownership interest in the real estate and the land itself, simply the solar asset.
Mayor, could, I think there's just a connection issue here. I really.
You know what I'm thinking?
They're just doing the installation then, or they own, I want to know who owns this.
Hi, this is, this is Will Herschel from Verge. Can you hear me, Paul?
Yes, I can hear you very well. Thank you.
Great. The entity that will own the project is called VCP Solar One CT LLC, is a direct subsidiary or a wholly owned subsidiary of Verge. Verge is going to own and operate the project in consultation with a utility company called Nextera, who owns Florida Power and Light. And the property itself, the real estate, will be owned by the Catholic Cemeteries Association. We will be leasing that property for them for the duration of the operation of the facility.
Are they the current owners, the Catholic?
Yes, yes. The Catholic Cemeteries Association will continue to own the property.
So you're leasing it from?
That is correct.
That's a lease. Okay, so. Yeah, there's a lot to consider. In your presentation, the one that Mr. Fitzgerald just presented, that one, there was some reference to the fact that there would be some kind of financial opportunities related to state, some connection to the state.
Yep.
All very vague. Well, could you just explicate that a little better, please?
Sure. And he's pulled down the presentation, but what he was referring to is called virtual net metering credits. Virtual net metering is the program. And there's a state program that permits municipalities, state institutions, and agricultural off-takers to be the beneficiary of credits on their utility bills from projects that are not located on their facility or on their property. And so that's the program that Brian was referring to.
Okay. Does Verge have any relationship, any business relationship with EverSource? Is there any?
Yes.
Or are they just a consumer?
So we will be delivering to EverSource renewable energy certificates, also called REX, ZREX, or low emissions renewable energy certificates. We have a 15-year contract with EverSource to deliver those REXs to them.
All right. This is not a subsidiary in any way of EverSource, though.
It is not.
In any way, okay. Let me ask you this, following up on Councilman Oliver's questions, I'm in very much sort of in agreement with where he was going with this. Have you looked into approximately two years ago, maybe a little bit more, we were presented with a proposal to develop our landfill as a possible location for this? Is there any reason why that wasn't reconsidered or considered as a locale for this?
I do not know the specifics of that project, but I would imagine that the reason that that project did not go forward was because either they were not allowed to take the benefit of virtual net metering credits because other projects for other municipalities were ahead of them in the queue, there's only a limited capacity that gets allocated on an annual basis to municipalities, or the interconnection costs for citing a project at that location were such that a project would not be feasible for that location.
Well, you're looking, you're looking to just for, what is the council's responsibility tonight for this? Just to accept this presentation?
Yeah, just.
Yeah, I think I'm in the ballpark with David on this, meaning that, again, I very much am, you know, a huge fan of solar energy. I don't like, I don't like developing this particular project for that particular use. I just think there are other places, again, I would much prefer, much, much prefer that the city, I mean, if you haven't maybe, or haven't done this enough or often enough, reach out to other providers to look at that same locale that was presented to us two years ago as a landfill, where at that time it was presented to the city council. I was sitting on the council at the time, that that was a viable and usable piece of property for that purpose. That to me is a win-win for the city, okay? It's literally covering an otherwise unusable eyesore with a revenue generator. This to me has complications and compromises that I'm not prepared to take for the money that the city would save by this, by virtue of this presentation at this time. So I would need to think about it more, hear about it more, but I'm leaning against this, supporting this project, Mayor.
Karen Wagner here.
Yes.
I was actually a member of the public at the meeting that Paul was talking about, and that was my concern as well. I think in one of the letters that was read earlier today, we had mention of why that selection was not made for that landfill. And I appreciate everyone, the presenters' comments about assuming the reasons it wasn't accepted. But I would really like to do some research and find out why that other company did not go through, because as Paul said and David, I think that's a piece of property that could stand to have this type of installation on it and not be objective to anyone.
This is Will Herschel from Verge. I just want to stress quickly again, the importance of site selection and the difficulty that solar developers have in the state of Connecticut to cite projects based off of an intersection of different criteria. One being the core forest criteria that Brian Fitzgerald outlined, the second being the stormwater control provisions and the topography area that, or delineations and restrictions that we're, that we have to contend with. Another being restrictions on development of certain sized projects on prime farmlands. Another being the cost and the available capacity on the distribution network for us to be able to deliver power the way that you have to deliver if you're going to cite these class one renewable energy resources. And the last one being the availability and the willingness of landowners to provide land at a price that permits for delivering power to the rate pair at an efficient and affordable rate. So there is a hybrid and intersection that we're trying to hit the sweet spot on. And it is very difficult to please all parties, but we're doing absolutely the best that we can at all times to do that.
I appreciate the hard work that you've done. You really put a lot into this project and the presentation was very well done. I still would be curious as to why the other company did not establish there. I think having those reasons would be reinforcing for your project.
So I've been getting, like madly getting texts from people who know more than myself about having to do with the flood zone and the wetlands in that area. having to do with the flood zone and the wetlands in that area. Anybody that's lived on Torrington Street knows it's wet and floods pretty, pretty easily, particularly in land. So is there a, is there a plan to deal with the water flow over the next 20 years? I guess that's one of the questions.
There is, yes, and this is Brian Fitzgerald from Vergey. Really, so Brad Parsons is on with us from All Point Technology, who's our professional engineer. And his staff, earlier this spring, fully delineated the wetlands and did all the necessarily environmental studies. The parcel is cited in which way where it is, you know, very low sloping, so there's no major runoff issues, but per deep stormwater guidelines, we will be constructing a few small stormwater runoff basins that if Brad is on right now, I'm sure he can touch on in more detail and how we anticipate to deal with that. But the wetlands on the parcel were fully delineated in our project area is, is outside of those completely and the setbacks required as well.
Yeah, and I think owning farmland adjacent, I'd be concerned with, you know, what that, you know, drain looks like. Anyway, that's it.
So this is Brad Parsons. I can speak to that a little bit more. Again, we are, we have designed some small water quality basins to manage the increase in gravel runoff associated with the access roads. But the panels themselves, you've got grass that is there now and will continue to be there in the future. Grass will be planted, that will grow underneath the panels themselves. So the, the area is going to function much like it does today from a stormwater standpoint with, you know, sheet and overland flow getting to the wetlands as it does today.
So Mayor, I know that the city has a lease. Paula asked about this. I'm sorry, that's my clock. Had asked, you know, I'm not sure what your question was, but you know, the, the ball field is right there. And no one's actually been able to play, unfortunately, during this pandemic. But it is really adjacent to this project. I just wanted to make sure the council understands what the location is. And it's like right there. And I I do think that if the outreach to any of the softball teams that are there, there's children from as young as four or five up to adults that actually play there, so. Just throwing a little education out.
Yeah, naturally, I'm sorry, the city doesn't own that.
No, they lease from the Cemetery Association. Right, and their lease is how long, Mayor?
I don't have that up in front of me. But I will tell you that we are an abiding property owner in that we own the Torrington Middle School, which is considered to be an abiding property. So and to Councilwoman Wagner's question, the, we actually had a lease. I was just trying to pull out my files on that lease that we entered into. And that was back in 2015. And for all the reasons that you just heard, you know, it was, you know, it was about whether or not those ZREX credits were issued. It was about the viability of connecting to the grid. And there was a question of decommissioning of the solar panels. And now, those were, you know, the laundry list of reasons why the lease didn't go beyond the due diligence phase with the solar company. So, so they peeled away and that was back in 2015 or early 2016. I welcome that conversation with Vergey if, you know, if it was determined that this site wasn't a viable location.
Mayor, can I?
Yeah.
David, David was, David.
I was gonna say, Councilman Oliver.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. You know, one of the other things, having had children that have played soccer on that field, on those fields, and having spent a lot of time at the farm there around Halloween and picking and all that stuff, we're all very familiar with it. But happens up on that field on a regular basis is RC planes are quite frequent. Well, and you'll remember too, there's a lot of kites that are flown there too. So I I just bring that out because that's how the community uses that area for entertainment and outdoor activities and hobbies. And planes and helicopters are flown there on a fairly regular basis. Sometimes you also see rockets. Every once in a while, you might see a rocket go up as well. But I just throw that out for the common good because it's another use of the field that doesn't involve a ball. So that's all.
Without doubt, David, without doubt. I was gonna say much the same thing. That's a pristine piece of property right there. And, and, you know, it's an exceptional piece of property. And it's something that the city council should think long, long, long and hard about in terms of developing in ways that would completely be adverse to the just, just to that value to the city. And what I would like, Mayor, as a follow-up to this conversation, especially, I think Ray Jew is on this meeting, is in this meeting, and since he's now in a position to help us. It just occurs to me that there's a lot of questions revolving that site. And I think the city council all, pretty much, those of us who were on the council at the time, were very excited about the idea of developing that piece of property, meaning the, you know, the landfill at the time. I would like to hear a presentation specifically about what, what are the benchmarks that the city has to meet at various pieces of property in Torrington to satisfy those requirements as laid out by, I'm sorry, I don't remember the gentleman's name from, from Vergey. I mean, at least one, having to do with the water flow and, and storm water flow. The idea that Torrington has just bonded $72 million to, to rebuild our infrastructure, you know, for sewage and water management, literally within a stone's throw of where that, where that solar array would have been built on the landfill means that there, you know, there's, there's areas of possible discussion about, can we take that into consideration to meet, to help meet the requirements for that landfill for some developer to, you know, to develop as a solar, as a solar facility there? So that, again, instead of just being against this or not, I would like to see a positive approach to what does have to, what benchmarks do have to be by the city for various other pieces of property in Torrington that would meet the win-win sort of criterion that I'm, that I'm asking for.
No, I, we can certainly do that. We can certainly bring forward. We're very interested in pursuing a solar array. We all know that the, you know, the landfill is really the perfect location for this. You know, everything hinges on, you know, what is, you know, what is the power that we're purchasing? Is it, you know, virtual net metering? Is it, is it behind the meter? Is it? I mean, all of those things. We've gone through this exercise a few times. You know, we've brought in a consultant in the past to help us, guide us through this, help us devise, you know, RFPs so that we can, you know, cast that wide net to see who's out there to do this kind of project. As you heard Brian say, I mean, it's, it's, it, it's it's a laundry list of, you know, of what they need to make it work.
Yeah, I would like to see that laundry list, I guess is what I'm asking.
Sure, yeah. Um, yeah, well, definitely, we can, we can do that. I know that Ray Jew and I have had this conversation. You know, he's on the line. I don't know if he can unmute himself and talk about, you know, the conversations that we've had about this, but our interest is in exactly that. Finding that, you know, that solar project, that's the right fit for the city of Torrington.
Somebody texted me about NIDAC, Mayor. I don't know if that's ever been put on for consideration.
No, I wouldn't say that, no. I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree that NIDAC is a good spot for that. I mean, that's, you know, downtown Torrington, you know, you don't want to have a solar array in a neighborhood right there in your downtown area when you know there's potential for greening.
I suspect several people on this committee have been, have received the same text message.
Oh, I'm gonna guess, no. I think I know who's texting everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, NIDAC.
Which I appreciate.
There's a, you know, we've even had long conversations with FuelCell, you know, when you talk about alternative, you know, energy sources and you talk about, you know, those backup resources or sources of energy and FuelCell being a Torrington company. I, every year, it's, it's maybe every eight months, we're back at the table having these conversations. But we can put together a presentation on what potential exists, you know, for, you know, solar projects, wind projects, fuel cell projects, you know, biodigesters. I mean, we've, we've had all those conversations and we continue to have those conversations. There's a fit for us out there. We can certainly make this a project over the summer and bring something forward.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor.
Yes.
If I could interject a little bit. So we are most interested in developing a project at the landfill. We think it is an ideal site. We are in conversations, we have had two companies approach us in regards to reviewing that site. I've done a tour, a site tour of the landfill with one firm. And actually, I have a site review with a second firm tomorrow to, to walk the site and to look at the potential. As you know, my predecessor, Mr. Roulet, had two, looked at two opportunities to develop the landfill. As you, you know, as Counselor Cavanero had said, I mean, it, it's a prime piece of property that we, other than it's a capped landfill, we feel has some great potential. And we think that, you know, potentially reexploring and looking at a solar project or some other renewable energy project at that site is a viable option. And so that's, from our, from my perspective, I think that is a priority for me and for the city is to look at a potential project at the landfill site.
Take your rate.
Mayor, I'm just gonna add one more. I know, is Rista on the line? I know in terms of our economic development plans. I don't know if she, if she had any thoughts about.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
She?
Yeah, she, I'm sorry, just texted me. She said she just lost all volume and then dropped off the call. I did want to bring her on because, I mean, obviously, there is a plan of conservation and development that the city has adopted, and I wanted her to be able to speak a little bit about that and how a solar array or alternative energy sources fit into that. Unfortunately, I, I'm sorry, she's dropped off, but this can be part of that larger discussion about where's the appropriate place for the city to work with a solar array company and move that city property forward with some proposal. I'm also gonna correct myself. We actually had two leases on that landfill, two, one in 2014 and one in 2016. I mean, it's, it's not for the lack of trying. Yeah, it's not for the lack of trying. It's just, as you heard from Vergey, you know, it's, it's, it's making sure that all of those pieces are falling in in the right, you know, the right places. So. So I don't know that there's a requirement for any action on this this evening. There is a, a request that Vergey has presented before the Siting Council. The Siting Council has notified the municipality that if it wishes to comment on the application, that it must do so within 30 days of receipt of that application. You have to, you have to turn my lights on. And, you know, as an abiding property owner, you know, I don't know if there's, you know, there's a desire on the part of the council to take any position on this particular project. Then I guess at this point, I would just say thank you to Brian for your presentation. And we can move on to our next agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Carbone. Thank you, councilmembers. We appreciate it. At this point, we will hop off the call.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right. Then item seven on the agenda. I'll enter a motion to consider business by the Small Cities Subcommittee. I don't know if they were able to meet before the council meeting.
So moved, Rabino.
Thank you, Councilman Rabino. Do I have a second?
Wagner, second.
So a motion and a second. Is there a sub-motion recommendation?
Yes, there is, Mayor. The Small Cities Committee met and we went, we went to approve item number TO18-025 pre-removal 2244 Spring Street, Torrington. There's ample money in the differential of what is left on the property and it's only $2,350. We unanimously approved the approval vote to council for approval.
All right, so the sub-motion made by Councilman Rabino is to approve the Small Cities Project T018-025 tree removal at 244 Spring Street in the amount of $2,350. Do I have a second? Thank you, Councilman Cavanero. Questions or comments on the motion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'll move into item eight. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-474B, I'll enter a motion on the one-year extension of the collective bargaining agreement by and between the city of Torrington and the United Public Service Employees Union, UPSU, Local 424, Unit 78, for a period of July 1, 2020 to June 30 of 2021, as described in Attorney La Mer's memo dated May 21, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Wagner.
Second, Cavanero.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Are there questions? I do have Jamie La Mer on the call with us and Corporation Council.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
No question? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item nine. Acting here in the WPCA, I'll enter a motion to approve payment number, payment of $2,500 from Fund 490 Sanitary Sewer Capital Interest to Weston Sampson Engineers for services on Phase 1 Schedule B bidding in Homestead Road, Kimball Lane, Hartford Avenue, Lyman Drive Projects.
I move nine, Rabino.
Thank you.
Second, Cavanero.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10. I'll entertain a motion to accept the purchasing agent's recommendation and authorize the mayor to extend the current contract with Air Temp Mechanical Services, Inc. of Suddington for the HVAC services through fiscal year 2021.
I'll move it. Rouet.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouet. Do I have a second?
Rabino, second. Point of order, can we take item number 10, 11, 12, and 13? All in one motion, please? Since they're all renewable.
Well, only because, yeah, only because they're separate companies. You have Air Temp Mechanical, West State Mechanical, and a Splendid Tree. We could probably get through this quickly if we want to.
Okay.
All right, so a motion made by Councilwoman Rouet, seconded by Councilman Rabino. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Item 11, accept the purchasing recommendation to extend the current contract to West State Mechanical.
I'll move it. Rouet.
Wagner, second.
Wagner, second.
So.
Really? Caught me off guard. A motion and a second. All in, question? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, entertain a motion to accept the recommendation to extend the current contract to a Splendid Tree expert company of Willow Grove for tree trimming removal for fiscal year 2021.
Move 12, Beano.
Second, Cavanero.
So I have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion to accept the purchasing agent's recommendation and authorize the mayor to extend the current contract with Building One Facility Services LLC of Durham for cleaning services at the Armory and the Teen Center through 2021.
Rouette, I'll move it.
Second, Cavanero.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 14, and I know that I do have some of our Torrington's finest on the call with us to take questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve Chief Baldwin's request to enter into a 10-year contract with the Torrington Police Department's current vendor, acts on for baddy, excuse me, baddy worn cameras and tasers with pricing as described in Chief Baldwin's memo, and to allow for the renegotiation of the contract after five years. This would be contingent upon the Board of Safety's approval. Do I have a motion?
Wagner, motion.
Second, Cavanero.
Thank you. So I have a motion and I have a second. And I think, is it, is Todd Fader and Greg Widiac, I think, are you still on? Sergeant Widiac is on.
I'm here, Mayor.
Oh, good, okay. All right. So, do we have questions on this? Everybody read the memo and you're comfortable with this?
Yes.
All right, then I'll just call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Thank you very much for being on the call, Sergeant. So, moving on to. Lost my trust. Where am I?
15.
15, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve IT's request to use Vertiv Corporation, formerly Emerson Network Power, to replace the batteries for the UPS systems located in the communications room at Fire Headquarters for a total cost of $11,087.16. This is coming out of our IT Equipment Account Line, item 5229. It is budgeted.
Move 15, Rubino.
Rouette, second.
So I have a motion and a second. Are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of the Deputy Public Works Director/City Engineer to award the contract for the cold-in-place recycling of various roads Phase 2020.5.1 project to Seal Coating, Inc., DBA Indus of Braintree Mass for a total amount of $723,099.80 with the expenditure allowance up to $72,309 for quantity fluctuation and contingencies, and authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city regarding the award and execution of the contract.
Move, Cavanero.
Thank you.
Second, Wagner.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion?
Rubino wants a question.
Yes.
I agreed around my neighborhood, they did the same thing. Ray, I just have concerns about one year and two years after this material. Keeping an eye on it because of, believe it or not, our own blades from our plowing. And the cracks are reassuming after a year to two years, so. Is there a seal coating follow-through that we do? After that, I just have a question. We're spending, you know, is that a five-year replacement fix? You know how you do certain seal coats and certain toppings that, you know, I, I know your program. It's just a matter of understanding that there is some damage being done over the first and second years of these processes.
So, I, I can comment to that, to that question, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Hi, it's Paul Cousins. The following contract award, item Agenda 17, is for a one-and-a-half-inch overlay on top of these cold-in-place recycling roads. So, the, the two contracts actually work together on the same group of roads. I just bid them separately because the cold-in-place is a very specific type of process. So, the roads get cold-in-place recycled, and then the other company comes in and does a one-and-a-half-inch regular asphalt overlay on top.
Okay, Paul, that's, so that's just a skim coat over, so you seal up and then just go an inch and a half?
Correct.
Of Class 2?
Yes, the, the cold-in-place actually revitalizes about three to five inches of the existing pavement by, by grinding it up, adding liquid asphalt to it, and then replacing it all in the same process. And then after that, the other, the other contract will overlay it.
Okay, just the next one. Thank you.
I have a question, Paul.
Yes.
We had our road done as well several years ago, and we have cracks appearing too. Now, is this going to be sealed, or is this for the project that you're putting on for 16 and 17? Are these different roads that you have these two applications for?
I'm sorry, what road are you referring to, Sharon?
Circle Drive was done two or three years ago.
Yes.
And we have some cracks that have been showing up in it, so I didn't know if you were coming back onto those as well.
I believe Circle Drive was a a micro-surfacing application that typically needs more regular maintenance. This, these two contracts actually are a different process in lieu of doing a regular reclaiming project.
Right, that's what I assumed. Yeah, thank you.
I'm trying a different process. It's considerably cheaper, and we're hoping to have good success with it, so.
That's the best part, it's cheaper.
It's, yeah. We can do this for typically $25, $26 a square yard versus 40 for reclaim, so.
Very good. Thank you for all your work on it.
Oh, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Paul.
Other questions or comments? Gonna call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. So, Part B of this, this phase of 2020.5.2 is, I'll entertain the motion with the recommendation of the Department of Public, or the Deputy Public Works Director/City Engineer to award the contract for the paving of various, various roads, 2020.5.2 project to Caciola Paving of Oakville for the total amount of $581,581.70 with an expenditure allowance of $58,158 for quantity fluctuation and contingencies, and authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city regarding the award and execution of the agreement. Motion, please.
Wagner.
Thank you.
Second, Wagner.
So a motion by Councilman Cavanero, seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 18, I'll entertain a motion to accept Corporation Council's recommendation and authorize the mayor pursuant to CGS Section 12-179 to release the liens described in Attorney Michelle's memo dated June 15, 2020.
Rouette, I'll move it.
Second, Cavanero.
All right, so a motion by Councilwoman Rouette, seconded by Councilman Cavanero. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 19, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the 11 tax refunds indicated in the list dated June 15, 2020.
Move 19.
Second, Cavanero.
Rubino.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 20, I'll entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen acting as a water pollution control authority to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize a sewer usage refund indicated in the last, excuse me, the list dated June 15, 2020.
Rouette, I'll move it.
Thank you.
Wagner, second.
So I have a motion. I have a second. Are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 21, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department's report from May of 2020.
Don't move, Cavanero.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanero. Do I have a second?
Second, Rouette.
Thank you. Motion and second. Any questions on the on the motion? I was just looking at this to see where we are. So I think I made mention of this the last time we received these reports that our concern always with a pandemic is what is the impact on work that's happening around the municipality? So, the fact that we had 211 permits pulled in May of 2019 totaling $2,108,535 versus 154 permits pulled in June of 20, or May of 2020 totaling $31,265,700. I, I think in light of the pandemic, it's pretty remarkable that we're still getting this kind of forward movement on the city. I hope we can sustain this. So, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any?
Aye.
All right, 22, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the department heads.
Don't move, Cavanero.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Wagner.
Thank you. So motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so just being quickly, I see Chief Baldwin is on the phone. Chief, did you want to add anything this evening?
No, I just wanted to thank the council mayor for approving item number 14 for us. It's very much appreciated. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Chief. I see Ed Towsey from the WPCA is on the line, muted. Is there anything that you wanted to say or add this evening, Ed? And I haven't unmuted him. All right, so moving in, I think Paul Cousins is still on the phone. Did you want to add anything further, Paul?
I have nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, and now Ed is open. Anything this evening?
No, I'm okay, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, and Ray Drew is still on the line. Ray, was there anything you wanted to add this evening?
No, just that we will keep you informed of our progress in reviewing our potential, what that solar project or hopefully a potential solar project looks like at the landfill.
Thank you.
And council.
Thank you. Council, Corporation Council, Vic, is there anything you wanted? No? Okay. And Carol Anderson, anything?
Nothing, Mayor. Just get your dog licensed.
Ooh, okay. All right, then if I've missed anybody else, I apologize. I keep trying to scroll through the names on the list. So, moving into item 23, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by Mayor and members of the council. Motion, Wagner?
Move it.
So I heard Councilwoman Wagner, I heard Councilman Rubino.
Second. Rubino.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're, where the floor is open and from my memory. Councilman Cavanero, anything to add this evening?
No, I'd just like to ask Councilwoman Rouette that she could, that she tell all of her birds up on the east side of town that they seem to be safe for now.
Thank you, Paul. But I think it's still got a ways to go, you know? It's Siting Council. Who knows what they'll do?
Did enjoy the comment about the woodchucks that.
You don't know what happens to the woodchucks, you know?
Anything else from Councilman Cavanero? Is that it?
That was quite enough for me.
Um, Councilman Rubino?
Nothing, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rouette?
I've probably said enough tonight, so, thank you. But I did want to just mention Chief Baldwin and thank him for his patience, tolerance. I mean, this is a very hard time for now, our police department, you know, across the country. So I, you know, I know that we have a professional police department and one of which I'm proud of, so. I don't know if that's politically correct to say, but I really wanted to make sure it was mentioned. And he's conducted himself in such a manner that makes, makes, I think, all of us proud to be from Torrington, so. Want to thank him. I don't know if he's still on the line, but.
Yes, I am, Councilwoman. Thank you very much. It's much appreciated. Our guys are going, they're still maintaining their professionalism with all of the stuff that's going on throughout our country. We had a terrible accident last weekend, last week, that our guys were involved in, and I can't tell you that, as you're proud of them, I'm just as proud of them as well. They do a great job for the city and this city should consider itself extremely fortunate to have this department of this caliber. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Wagner?
Just reiterating what, what Councilwoman Rouette said. I think we are so fortunate. It was so evident when we had the Black Lives Matter rally and the hard work done by Angaza and Effie as well as the support from our police department. You couldn't ask for more than that. It was excellent. The only other thing is I want to thank you, Mayor, for working with me on the Torrington Pride request. We were a little late coming to the table. I keep forgetting that the 15th was our last meeting. And for those who don't know, in January, several people came together and created a Torrington Pride organization for our LGBTQ community. And I had spoken to the mayor back then, and we had arranged a Pride Fest for June, which has since been canceled. But regardless of pandemic and quarantine, we have a Facebook page, if anyone would like to check it out, it's Torrington Pride. We also have a very short video in the Connecticut Virtual Pride 2020 Parade that is now on YouTube and on the Connecticut Pride site. And in working with Connecticut Pride people and with Mayor Carbone, we are going to have Pride in the City, a Pride in the City resolution hopefully the beginning of July, so we're extending Pride in Torrington for another week. But I'm really proud to say that we are the second community after New Britain to decide to do this and to support our LGBT community, so thank you very much, Mayor.
Absolutely. So we'll have that resolution and and documentation on the July 6th agenda, so the council can take some official action. And David Oliver?
Oh, I'm good. I learned a long time ago not to get in the way of the end of the meeting.
Between, yeah, exactly. Oh, except that I get to go. So, I just want to, I appreciate that Councilwoman Rouette brought it up. I think that our police department has really stood up and made us proud over the last couple of weeks. Not only in their representing the department in these most difficult times in our nation, but I think it was almost understated when Chief Baldwin spoke about the car accident last week where 16 where 16-year-olds, kids perished and the, you know, the sheer magnitude of what it is like to respond to that kind of an incident as well as our fire department, you know, who were also there. It's painful when you turn the news on at 4:30 in the morning, and Torrington is the lead story for an accident like that you're watching. You know, on the edge of your seat, wondering how bad is it and, you know, and what families are involved. Just a quick update on what's been going on here in the city. City Hall is open to the public. We have opened the one entrance on the south side of the building so that the public can get into the building. We are still strongly encouraging appointments only so that each department can control how many people are within the office space so as to observe all of those rules on social distancing. Ray Drew has done a most remarkable job in establishing those guidelines for our department heads and marking out all of the floor spaces and the signage throughout the building and doing yeoman's work on making sure that we're all keeping safe and any of the taxpayers and residents or visitors to City Hall are also being kept safe. We are moving along with a project on Franklin Street, Franklin Plaza. It's really starting to take shape. If any of you have an opportunity to get down there and walk through it, I think you'll all agree that this has been an incredible project for the city of Torrington. Should all be very proud of it. What was a really mostly underutilized area of the city that presented a terrible welcome mat now is becoming a beautiful streetscape. Paul Cousins and Rista Malanca and, you know, and RJB have been doing a great job paying attention to all of those details so that this really does become a project you can all be proud of, that our property owners on that street can be proud of. We do continue to work with Penrose and moving their project forward, developing, you know, the timeline for cleaning up our Franklin Street property and bringing them closer to contract and a shovel-ready project. And I am working on budget cuts, as you know, after the Board of Finance meeting. I have some work to do. Those cuts must come to you first for approval before I can enact them and then share those cuts with the Board of Finance. So I'm thinking that if not the first meeting of July, most likely the second week of July, second meeting in July, I will have a complete list of what we need to cut so that we're meeting the bottom-line appropriation. And the only other thing I wanted to add is Councilman Waldron, who wanted to be here for this meeting this evening, unfortunately did have a bit of an accident, quite serious accident, and he, I don't want to, I shouldn't say overshare, but he was doing some work on his house. He fell off his roof. He has been injured somewhat seriously. He is at St. Mary's Hospital. I did check in with him just before the meeting started. He's hopeful that he will recover quickly and be back in the saddle certainly before our next meeting. So our thoughts and prayers go out to him for speedy recovery. And there being no other business before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Don't move. Wagner, so move. Thank you. Second?
Oliver, second. Beat you, Frank.
All in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Stay safe, everybody.
Now go find those birds.